Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June 14th. At 4:01, I'd like to call the order of the Board of Commissioners. If you take your role, please.
Commissioner Dorancheck.
Here.
Vicki.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
Tilly.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
All members of California.
Thank you. We'll stand for the invocation and we'll take a moment of silence for the families that have been disrupted in Orlando.
Almighty God, Judge of all people, you have placed in our hands, Lord, the wealth we call our own. Give us wisdom by your Holy Spirit, Lord, so that our prosperity may not be a curse in our lives, but an instrument for blessing. We ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners, and we ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding, so that decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move into the minutes. I'm sure that they're in the works, so we'll pass until July. So next order would be public input. Anyone from the public who would like to wish to address the Board? If you'll mention your name and address as you come up, that'd be wonderful and good afternoon.
Frank Quinn, 4110, Creekwood Circle. Apologize for my attire, but I knew I wasn't going to see anybody important here today.
A comedian!
Actually, I'm on my way to Geezer Doubles Tennis, and I hope you don't mind. I mean no disrespect.
No problem.
You people carelessly twice appointed me to the Library Board, and I'm here to address the appointments you have on today, just briefly. I hope you'll reappoint Don Carline to a five-year term. He's the senior member of the Library Board right now, as I'm sure you know. Served as chairman through some very tough times, and has got not only his background as president of Delta County, but is a finance officer out there which is very helpful to us. He's a wise old man on the Board, and we'd really miss him if you let him go. So I hope you'll reappoint him. As to the other two, I don't know either of them, but I know a little of Mary Herr. And other than being a lawyer, which means you'd have two lawyers on the Board, I think very highly of her. I think she's very well-prepared. I've heard a lot of people around town tell me how capable she is, and she would be a welcome addition to the Board. So I'm just here to hope that you will appoint Herr to the one year remaining on Bob LaChance's term, and Don Carline to reappointment to a five-year term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure if you can hear me. My voice is trying to desert me, but two things. One, I want to thank the county for the help on Battery Park. We are all going to be very proud of that park. We'll have the rededication a week from today at 5:00, and you are going to be delighted with what you see. Second, I would really appreciate being reappointed to the Library Board. In one way or another, I have been connected with libraries for, it sounds like I'm exaggerating, but I'm not, for about 50 years. And I'll add a personal note. Yesterday was my 70th anniversary with my wife Betty.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Herr, and I want to thank the gentleman for his kind words about me, and I wanted to just explain like who I am and why I want to be on the Library Board. I've only lived here for two years. My husband, Dennis Rosa Bloom, went to Saginaw Valley when it first opened up, and he's always loved Bay City. And he always said, "When we retire, we're going to move to Bay City, and I can work on the paper," because the paper, he had a really good experience when he worked on the paper before. And so he took a buyout from the Free Press, and we looked around for houses, and we found a really nice house for a really, you know, unbelievable price. And then I was working at Legal Aid and Defender, and then I eventually moved up here, because I, like my husband, like Bay City, it's a much easier, much nicer place to live. People are very welcoming and, you know, courteous, and everybody has just really been great to us. I'm very concerned about libraries and their future, because people think that, A, nobody reads, B, oh, everybody just downloads books, and so there's no point to having libraries. But, you know, that's not true, because there's a lot of people that don't have computers that use libraries to get jobs, to find out things, to read the paper. And I don't think that a lot of people are aware of how much use the library gets, and how important it is, and how important it is not to have two different groups of people, you know, one that have access to everything, and the other group that really doesn't have access to very much. And those are probably the people that need the library services the most. So I hope that you will support my efforts to be on the Library Board.
Next. Anyone else wish to address the Board of Commissioners? With that being said, we'll move on to communications. And what I would like to do first at this point would be to change a little bit of the order and do the elections for the Library Board, if we could. Mike?
Sure.
The first on the agenda would be the five-year term.
Don't we have to receive the applications first?
Yeah, that's a good point. So we'll make it legal. So a motion to receive would be in order.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion on it. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then, to stay in proper order, we're going to go down to C, which is Robert LaChance, the resignation from the Bay County Board. Motion to receive would be in order also.
So moved.
Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so now we can vote. Thank you.
Today we'll start the voting with Commissioner Tilly.
Are we voting?
Just on the five-year one?
Five-year first. Okay. Don Carline.
Lutz.
Don Carline.
Dorancheck.
Dennis Carline.
Vicki.
Carline.
Coonan.
Don Carline.
And Herrick.
Don Carline.
Commissioner Krieger.
My old boss from Delta, Mr. Carline.
Seven unanimous votes.
Very good. Congratulations, I think. I know. All right. Next will be for filling the one-year term left, Mr. LaChance.
And we start with Commissioner Lutz.
Oh, Mary Herr.
Dorancheck.
Mary Herr.
Vicki.
Randy Badgerow.
Coonan.
Mary Herr.
Herrick.
Mary Herr.
Tilly.
Mary Herr.
And Krieger.
Mary Herr.
And Mary Herr is the one-year appointee.
Very good. Congratulations, Mary. So, continuing with petitions and communications, we have a couple presentations, and I'll have to start to read our first one. In fact, we need a motion to receive. It'd be Resolution 216-128.
So moved.
Support.
All right. So we'll back up a second. I need a motion to receive the appointments to the Library Board.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so now we can vote. Thank you.
Today we'll start the voting with Commissioner Lutz.
Are we voting?
Just on the five-year one?
Five-year first. Okay. Don Carline.
Lutz.
Don Carline.
Dorancheck.
Dennis Carline.
Vicki.
Carline.
Coonan.
Don Carline.
And Herrick.
Don Carline.
Commissioner Krieger.
My old boss from Delta, Mr. Carline.
Seven unanimous votes.
Very good. Congratulations, Mary. So, continuing with petitions and communications, we have a couple presentations, and I'll have to start to read our first one. In fact, we need a motion to receive. It'd be Resolution 216-128.
So moved.
Support.
All right. So we'll back up a second. I need a motion to receive the appointments to the Library Board.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So... So, we have a presentation honoring Alfred Bordeaux of Bay County Korean War Casualty. We have Resolution 2016-128. If you'd read the resolution, please.
Met the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas 2015 marked 65 years since the start of the Korean War, the conflict between the Democratic People's Republic of Korea, representing North Korea, and the Republic of Korea, South Korea, in which 2.5 million persons lost their lives. And whereas, the war reached international proportions in June 1950, when North Korea, supplied and advised by the Soviet Union, invaded the South. And whereas, the United Nations, with the United States as the principal participant, joined the war on the side of the South Koreans, and the people of the People's Republic of China came to North Korea's aid. And whereas, after more than a million combat casualties had been suffered on both sides, the fighting ended July 1953, with Korea still divided into two hostile nations. And whereas, one of the Americans who lost his life in this conflict was Private First Class Albert Bordeaux, an 18-year-old who, four days shy of his 19th birthday, was captured by the North Koreans during the first U.S. engagement in the Korean War. And whereas, with an eighth-grade education and limited employment options, Alfred Bordeaux joined the U.S. Army to defend and serve this country. And whereas, Private First Class Alfred Bordeaux assigned to Task Force Smith, a small detachment of GIs outnumbered and outgunned, sent to delay the North Korean advance, was Bay County's first POW in casualty in the Korean War. And whereas, Private First Class Alfred Bordeaux was part of a forced, nearly, was part of a forced nearly 100-mile trek known as the Tiger Death March, a nine-day march involving inhumane conditions endured by civilian prisoners and POWs, as well as his discriminant killing by the North Korean officer leading the march, i.e. the tiger. And whereas, tragically enduring nearly a year of beatings, nights in snow-covered fields, and days without, with a meal of only boiled corn, Private First Class Alfred Bordeaux died in a North Korean POW camp of malnutrition. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive take this opportunity to recognize and honor Private First Class Alfred Bordeaux for his selfless bravery as a soldier of the U.S. Army, one of the many brave men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice to preserve liberty for all Americans. Signed, Ernie Krieger, Chair and Board.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hickner.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It's a pleasure and a real honor to present this to Duff Subey. Duff, if you'd like to, well, Duff and I have known each other for many years, and I guess maybe you could, and you're...
My brother is named after my father.
Great. You know, sometimes we wonder how tough life is for each of us on any given day, and then you hear and read what was in this proclamation, and we all should realize how lucky we are. You know, there's been a lot of films on World War II and on the Vietnam War, but I was thinking, I like to watch film, and I can't think of a good film on what the Korean War was all about. But all I know is that a whole lot of people did a whole lot of good things on behalf of this country, and we should be, we are very fortunate for their valor, as well as their courage and their commitment to this country. And so, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the people of Bay County, Duff, I'd like to present, your cousin, and perhaps you could elaborate on how you got started on this. I got started on this, we had a conversation a couple weeks ago, and he was relating that he's going to be on his way to Korea this month, and it sounded like a story that needed to be told, and fortunately, I'm live, jumped on it right away. He was on the front page, and so, with no further ado.
Well, the interest came from my grandpa, Uncle Alfred's mother. Losing him so young, several years went by, and I just got started in genealogy, and I thought I'd do a little bit more research on Uncle Alfred. And unfortunately, most of his siblings, except for Vicki's father, are deceased, so I just started reading some books and interviewing some of the other POWs that survived the POW camp that he was in. And in fact, I was fortunate to visit one down in Texas and then talk to one of them that actually was on the burial detail, and was a good friend of his during their stay in the POW camp. So that's what the interest in, I just wanted to write something down, because he had no children, and once they were gone, there would be nobody left that would remember him, and so that was my interest. Did you want?
No, I just want to thank everyone.
Yes. Down. The Board, thank you.
Very good. Next, we have recognition of Kathy Janer as a recipient of the Carleen K. Moore RN Nursing Excellence Award from Saginaw Valley University. You do me the honor and... Got it? Good.
Resolution 2016-129 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas, it is an honor for the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive to recognize Kathy Janer, RN, BSN, the Public Health Nursing Manager for the Bay County Health Department, on receiving the Carleen K. Moore RN Nursing Excellence Award from Saginaw Valley State University. And whereas, Kathy Janer is the first public health nurse to receive this award from SVSU. And whereas, established by SVSU's Department of Nursing, the honor recognizes the continual dedication, quality service, and frontline leadership exhibited by nurses in clinical practice, education, leadership, and community service. Whereas nominated by this high honor by Joel Strauss, Bay County Health Director, and Molly Stapish, MSN RN, a nursing instructor at SVSU, Kathy Janer has been the Public Health Nursing Services Manager for Bay County since 2012, responsible for clinical oversight of two of the three major divisions of the Health Department, maternal-child healthcare services, and public health services. And whereas, as the Public Health Nursing Manager, Kathy Janer has provided steady leadership to a number of programs, including the Maternal Infant Health Program, Children's Special Healthcare Services Program, immunizations, hearing and vision, family planning, immunological disease investigation, STD, HIV, and the Childhood Lead Prevention Program. Whereas Kathy Janer has effectively coordinated SVSU nursing student rotations, works tirelessly with staff to ensure that all aspects of public health are met, and is a true mentor to her subordinates and students. Therefore, be it resolved, the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive hereby extend their congratulations to Kathy Janer on receiving the Carleen K. Moore RN Nursing Excellence Award from Saginaw Valley State University, and offer their appreciation for her positive efforts in the support of health issues in Bay County. Signed, Ernie Krieger, Chair and Board.
Very good. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? None. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Strauss and Kathy, if you'd come up, please.
Molly Stapish approached me and suggested that we both nominate Kathy for this prestigious award. I readily jumped at the chance. I will tell you this, Kathy, she's got about 20-plus years of experience at the Bay County Health Department. She was there, I won't say when she started, a long time ago, but she's held just about every nursing position at the Bay County Health Department. Additionally, she was Bay County's first school nurse in the mid-'90s, and when I was working at the hospital, I helped Kathy set up the clinic over there. And we were just talking about this today. When she was a school nurse, she worked from 7:30 in the morning till 3:00 without a break or without a lunch, because that was the need. So she's brought that energy to the Health Department and has done some very significant things here, so I'm very, very proud to give her this award. And as I told her, when she won, we called her up, made this special, made it a surprise. This is a big deal. No other public health nurse has ever won this award at Saginaw Valley State University, so we're very proud of her efforts.
My only comment is, when I look at the judge and I look at you, you look so much younger. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm truly honored, especially being at the same time that there was a Korean War veteran just on earth today. I just feel very honored to have received this award, to have been nominated by Joel, to be chosen by SVSU's committee, SVSU and the Moore family for even offering this opportunity for nurses in our community to be recognized, and most of all, for the Board of Commissioners to take the time out of their meeting to recognize me. Thank you very, very much. I'm very honored. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under petitions and communications, would be spoil sites of banger township. I'm not sure, but I think we have a gentleman here from the DEQ. If I could get your name and address.
I'm Philip Roycraft. I'm the district supervisor for the Department of Environmental Quality.
Are you out of the Bay City District or at Lansing?
I'm sorry?
Are you from Lansing or Bay City?
No, I work out of the Bay City office, as well as Cadillac and Gaylord. I also have with me today Dwayne Roskowsky, who originally reviewed the analytical results for the dredge material before the placement, and Lori Babcock, who's our new district geologist, who might need to work on this if there's additional follow-up necessary.
Okay. Very good.
So, you know, it's been, it's been some 15 years or more since the department did the review on this material, so there has been renewed interest in the last couple years. I can say that I've had some discussions with a number of people, as has our former district geologist, Lauren Curtis. I know there's been some inquiries. You know, we're willing to take whatever questions anyone has, but depending on the question, we may or may not be able to answer it today, but we'll help you in any way we can.
That's wonderful, and I'm glad that you're here to listen to some of the concerns. I have a few questions from some of the residents that live around the site, and one of the questions that we'll start off with is, did the Saginaw Bay Division of MDEQ, on its own, have the authority to negotiate the terms of the confined disposal facility, or were there other terms that could have been approved by Lansing? Was the decisions for that site done here, or was it done in Lansing? Is what I'm getting at.
Yeah. The question is, does the department have sole authority to specify the terms of the disposal area, or could that have been negotiated between the department and the township? We kind of had a standard restrictive covenant that applies in cases where dredge material is impacted by, am I too high or too low?
Too close.
Too high?
Too low.
Okay. We kind of have a restrictive, a standard restrictive covenant that we use in cases where dredge material exceeds certain criteria for contaminants. In this case, arsenic was a little bit over the direct contact criteria, and so in those cases typically a standard restrictive covenant gets applied, which is designed to make sure that the material is not disturbed and used in some way that's inconsistent with the potential hazard.
Okay.
Usually, we don't do a site-specific negotiation on those, just because it's about the lowest level of regulatory control that we apply to a material as a placement of a restrictive covenant on the property that it's disposed on.
Okay. So what I plan on doing is, we'll go back and forth if there's somebody on the Board that has a question that you'd like to address the DEQ. Mr. Vicki.
I think one of the questions was the morbidity and mortality in the area that was raised, so I don't know if there's been any studies recently of people living in the area having a higher morbidity, mortality rate. That's, I think that was one of the questions that was brought up at one of the meetings. I don't know if it's been 15 years, but maybe we haven't looked at that, but that was a concern.
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, I will say that the arsenic level in this case was not too high above background concentrations that we find in soils across the state, and it's quite possible this arsenic level was just representative of background conditions in the Kukuh and River. Arsenic happens to have a fairly low direct contact number, and you'd only notice health effects if you in fact came in direct contact with, you know, with those soils. So presuming that the material is in an area that's not heavily utilized and is covered by topsoil, there should be really no effect.
According to the paperwork that I saw, there was a permit issued, which was 97-08-0060, and the question on it was, was there a follow-up to the requirements of that permit? Did anybody oversee what the rules and regulations were within that permit, and were they followed? And I guess what it comes down to is the movement of some of the spoils that were put into this site and transferring of them, because I know that a number of the individuals that lived alongside a route that trucks were taking to haul some of this material to different areas had to put up with a tremendous amount of dust that was generated off these, and of course, there were concerns whether or not that was putting their health in jeopardy.
Yeah, typically, we don't have any regulatory authority over transportation of material once it hits public roads. Our Water Resources Division covers the dredging itself in the river and covers that through a permit that they issue. Our division, which happens to be the Office of Waste Management and Radiological Protection, we cover the controls on the ultimate disposal area, the route between, you know, if there's trucking involved between the two locations... The route between, you know, if there's trucking involved between the two locations, that's really covered by standard transportation laws. So I guess it's, in terms of a health effect, again, it's hard to tell without knowing where the dust would have been coming from. Was that dust on the road? Was that dust from the dredge material itself?
My understanding was it was the materials that had been--
Dust, dust that was the dredge material itself.
Correct. They were having to come through fields to get to the road to leave, so.
Yeah. I can only say that, you know, we've had some follow-up emails and so forth that transpired between the township and the department. But as I indicated, these dredge disposal cases are typically a low level of regulatory oversight on our part, unless we receive a complaint or something at the time. I don't think from the file record that we got any complaints at that time, but there may have in fact been problems raised by residents. But I don't recall in the file record that, having seen any of that.
Dwayne, you remember overseeing anything like? Good afternoon.
Dwayne Roskowsky. So I've been reviewing dredge projects for over 26 years. I'm the only one that's been looking at them. So I've looked at every dredge project down in the state where we look at contaminants. And though we have not had any questions or issues of this, as far as I can tell. So typically, the land and water guys are the ones that issue the permits. So I assist them in looking at the contaminants. So in the past, they would go out and verify projects, but with the legislative constraints being put on them for shorter and shorter timeframes, they really can't go out and follow up on projects anymore. They spend all their time just issuing permits.
While you're up there, one of the questions I have, was it unusual or is it normal for disposal sites to be located in a residential area? I know that back in the '50s, with the maps being the way they were, it was actually a wetland. And, you know, as time has gone on, the term "wetland" has become so sacred that, you know, if a bird happens to fly over and leaves a little puddle, according to the DEQ, that's a wetland now. But back then, I don't know there was that kind of protection. And my answer to you is, were we doing something wrong or right in putting these spoils in the middle of a residential area?
All right. So our dredge procedure for the last 25 years, we would allow anyone to put on their property, you know, upland on their property, anything up to like a hazardous waste with a clean cover and deed restriction. We thought it would be best to get it out of the waterway, rather than leaving it in there and impacting the water and the fish and stuff. So typically, when people put these things on their property, they're sort of putting a black mark on their property that, you know, something's buried there. So they, I think they think long and hard before they do that. So over the last 26 years, maybe 200 times we've done this, allowed them to put contaminated materials on their property with clean cover and deed restriction. So it is the standard procedure.
It is?
Yes.
Even though we have a spoil site that was put together for dredgings out of the Saginaw River, how was it that we didn't take these contaminants, whatever the level is, out to the island instead of an individual's backyards?
It always comes down to cost.
So?
So probably if the people had to pay to take it out there, they would have just left it in the river. You know, so that's a choice they need to make.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Conan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dwayne, you said you've overseen for 26 years all the dredging. And, you know, I've heard a lot of stories, and I don't know what's true or what's not true. But going to the island, probably primarily from the Saginaw River, when they dredge that, and that material goes to the island, what types of hard materials? You know, is there a lot of PCBs, dioxins, and things like that?
That's why they built that CDF. So the Corps of Engineers paid millions of dollars to build that facility to hold the dredge material from the Saginaw River.
And I heard that, and I don't know how true it is, but out in the bay that there are pockets or that there are-- I probably read it in the paper somewhere, dioxin, you know, I don't know if they're nuggets or whatever they would be. Is there something like that that has existed or that is either out there or is in on the island now as well?
Yeah, I can only imagine, but I don't have that specific information. Typically, what we get is the in-place testing of the material. Then we want to make sure it's consistent with what originally went in there when they designed the thing. So they've done the studies to show that the PCBs and dioxins are not leaving that disposal area and getting into Saginaw Bay.
Okay, that was my question.
Right. So it's more of a direct contact for the birds and stuff. So that's why they usually put the cleaner stuff on top of the more contaminated stuff.
All right. So that was my, and I think you just answered it, that however they built that island and that it's not leaching and going back into the--
That's what it appears to be.
Have there been any tests or studies? Again, I haven't physically seen these photos, but I know of individuals that have done flyovers on the island. And it clearly shows that something is coming off that island into the waters. There's distinct discoloration.
I guess, you know, the water people would need to address that or the Corps of Engineers.
Okay. Well, we can always ask the Corps to come up and chit chat with us.
Because they get a 401 water certification to operate both that and the Upper River confined disposal facility. So they need to meet our water quality standards. So whether it's maybe just suspended solids at a certain time when they're de-watering it, they need to be in compliance with the permit they have.
The other question is, do you know how many times they've actually used that site, Bayside Park, for dredge materials? Has it been more than once?
Best I can tell, it was twice. I saw some information from like 1990 or '87 or something in a file. So I think maybe they had used it more than once, but--
And have the DEQ done any kind of soil samples to say to the people that live adjacent to the Bayside Park that there's nothing leaching? Because I know that in one particular home that has a sump, there is some type of foreign material that's coming into a sump pump that's raised some concerns. And I guess my question is, if that individual wanted to have that tested, would that be something that the DEQ would step in, being that you're the Department of Environmental? And you're here to make sure that the residents of Bay County aren't being harmed by actions that may have been taken in doing the dredging?
I guess I can't speak to that. If it's something like that, typically, your local county health department can move a lot faster than us.
Okay. So Mr. Strauss would be the gentleman that I'd want to talk to to see about taking samples of what's coming into an individual's basement.
So let me talk a little bit about background arsenic levels. So like Phil was saying, depending on where you are in the state, if you're over on the West Coast, you're going to see levels like 1 to 2 parts per million. When you get over in this part of the state, you're going to see around 12 to 15 parts per million. And if you get over by Port Huron, naturally occurring arsenic is going to run 40 to 50 parts per million. So there are naturally occurring levels all over the state that are above our calculated direct contact criteria.
Well, is it possible that there could also be, let's say, lead or cadmium in that mixture of arsenic in those spoils?
There could be just about anything from the way all the waterways were used for all the years as, you know, the sewer.
Well, again, the concerns are isn't so much what's in the waterways as the individuals that live on land that have this in their backyard. So there's where some of the concerns are coming in from these residents.
Well, in fact, the people may have higher arsenic in their backyard than what's in this spoils place, because there is a variation. You know, if you've got a lot of clays, you're going to have higher arsenic.
Well, we just tore a park apart, a children's park at Vets Park, because of levels of arsenic that were above standards. And Bangor Township's looking at taking this Bayside Park and possibly putting it into a disc golf course. So any disturbance of that soil obviously could cause some concerns. And I guess what it comes down to is we just want to know that what's in their backyard is going to be safe and they don't have to worry about whatever's been buried back there.
Right. As long as you maintain that six-inch cap that was required, there's not going to be an issue. So if they need to dig it up to do something, they need to put the cap back over it. That's all they need to do. They need to remove materials, then at that point, we'll determine whether that stuff needs to go to a landfill if they don't have room on site to place it. So we've done this with a number of parks around the state and other locations where they've had large mountains of dredge material and they want to come in and do something in the future. So the whole thing is, they need to put a plan to us for what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, how they're going to maintain the, you know, safety and then put the cap back on it once they're done.
Okay.
So that's what the deed restriction requires.
Commissioner Begic.
Somebody had mentioned something about radioactive material thorium on the site. Have you found any radioactive material?
It's not a parameter we typically look at.
It was brought up by one of our speakers.
Yeah, and I think maybe that was related back to the Hartley-Hartley landfill, that there was materials back there that was a little less desirable. But Commissioner Lutz.
Not particularly a landfill like that, especially one that's going to be by a residential area. What is normally tested in a spoil? What would you test for?
Well, we've tweaked our testing procedure over the years. So our current testing procedure is we have a list of metals that we look at. We have a list of polypneutical aromatic hydrocarbons, which you can think of as oils and greases that drip off your boats and stuff. And then we look at PCBs in certain places. The Coquelin River isn't known to be a source or have PCBs in it. If a project was on the Saginaw, yes, we'd look at PCBs. In addition to the parameters I talked about, we would look at dioxins and furants for any project on the Saginaw River. That's if they want to, or they could put it on their own property with clean cover and deed restriction.
So in all the documentation that you guys have, there isn't anything that's kind of over spec, everything is in writing?
Yeah, actually, it looked pretty good. So we've had some changes in our criteria over the years. And here's a number of things going on with our Part 201, our cleanup criteria. So in solid waste, we used to look at a 1 in a million protection. Now we've changed to the cleanup standard of 1 in 100,000. So we're actually allowing more contaminants to go out, which is the same as you'd be required to clean up to. And then actually, we've done a study here in the last two years concerning certain parts of the state. So in the past, our statewide background number for arsenic was 5.8. Now we consider Bay County to have a concentration of 12 as normal. So we've doubled the amount of arsenic we think is naturally occurring, you know, over here in the thumb, based on a bunch of sampling that we've done in the last 10 or 15 years. So the numbers we were looking at in the dredge material, I think, came out to be like 15 parts per million. So we say anywhere in Bay County, you're going to expect to find 12. So it's just a little bit above that criteria that we think the whole county. But soil by soil, block by block, it can change. So if you had to throw a number on Bay County, you would say 12 is naturally occurring for arsenic, which unfortunately is above the allowable human direct contact number of 7.6. Well, I guess think, okay, if you're living in Port Huron, they got 50. You only got 15 here.
Yeah, but we live here, not in Port Huron.
You know, so what those risk numbers talk about is an increased incidence of cancer of one person in 100,000 people that spend 70 years in contact with that material. So that's kind of how they develop the risk number. So many hours a day drinking so much water, ingesting so much soil for 70 years. So if 100,000 people stood on that pile for 70 years, we would expect one of them to get cancer.
It seems like we have more than that living around.
Yeah, well, one of the concerns is there is a family of a husband and wife that basically came down with the same cancer, and he has since passed. And so there's some concern on her part, how unusual is that to happen in the same household? But does anyone else have questions for these gentlemen? Because what I'd like to do, if you would, if you, I'm sure you guys have Michigan DEQ courage, right? If you could leave them with Mr. Lutz, I'm hoping that if we were to put a hand out and ask if you'd be willing to come in and possibly have, kind of what we're doing here, question and answers with some of the Bangor Township residents at the Township Hall, I'd like to get with Dennis and Kula and some of the trustees to see what we could put together. So those that weren't able to make this meeting might be able to come in, you know, early evening and have an open conversation to kind of put their minds at ease, if that's possible. Would you be willing?
I guess the bottom line is, we expect that the cap that was placed on it is going to protect the direct contact halfway.
Yeah, well, see--
And if you disturb the stuff, you need to just maintain the cap.
But there's where some of the problem comes in, when you talk about a cap. My understanding was that there was supposed to be a berm around the perimeter of this. Well, for some reason, that berm was removed. And because of some of the movement of the land there, I mean, that site's dumping all kinds of water, which shouldn't, onto other areas, causing a lot's change to the environment of that property. So I don't know who was involved in taking those berms down and not putting the proper slopes on it to keep that water contained. Because as you know, in Michigan, nobody has a right to dump water from their property onto somebody else's.
Right.
And if this is what indeed is going on, I think it needs to be reviewed. And somebody's going to have to step up to the plate and take whatever was made wrong and may get whole again. But that may be a different person to talk to. And I'm glad that you guys took the time to come in to address the board. And I look forward to talking with you to see if we can get something together in Bangor Township.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move into reports and resolutions of committee. We'll get into Ways and Means. Commissioner Conan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the Ways and Means Committee, we have Resolution 2016-130. This is the youth alcohol grant from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-131, justice assistance grant through the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-132, Otis Elevator Contract, Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-133, the 100 Club Grant Award for the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Herrick.
Yeah, Sheriff, you've granted the 100 Club, correct? Yes, sir. A lot of people don't understand what the 100 Club is. And I think since they gave a grant, you know, I know that, maybe I can help. You know, I know that they provide assistance for firefighters and police officers. That's the idea of it.
It's a group of local citizens that is formed that assist widows and children of injured and killed firefighters and police officers. And they have monies that they grant out to police departments and fire departments for equipment. But it's made up of local citizens and business people from the community that donate monies for this. And that money is kept in the event that we have an event where somebody gets injured or killed.
And I know that it's really starting to gain steam in Bay County. I know the one in Saginaw County has upwards of $1 million that thankfully they've never had to give any out for a death. And so they've been granting money to. And now the Bay City one is granting money. And, you know, as a former firefighter and you, as a member of law enforcement, I think it's a great thing these people are doing, you know, for the community. And a lot of people, they're always looking for new members. I know that. So, you know, they're always, they'll take any new member they can get, anybody can join the 100 Club in Bay County. And average people will do so because they're doing a lot of good. And I get a lot of emails from them, and I know they only have, they have one meeting a year. They can ask for a meal, and they get together and get everybody who belongs. And everyone makes a yearly contribution, and away they go. And they do things like donating for this Level 2 body armor that the Sheriff's Department had this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? With that, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-134, Public Education and Governmental Channel, Bay 3 TV. Through Administrative Services, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-135, this is an appropriation for the 2017 Midwinter Meeting of the Marine Corps, League, Edson, Klein, Van Slyke, the Bay County Detachment and Auxiliary-- Klein, Van Slyke, uh, the Bay County Detachment in Auxiliary through the Veterans Convention Appropriation. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-136. Pause in the park. It's an event waiver of the adoption fees for animal control. Move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-137. Empty the shelter date. This is an event to waiver adoption fees, animal control. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-138. Network Upgrade RFP for 9/11 Central Dispatch. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-139. Cummings Bridgeway Maintenance Agreement, 911 Central Dispatch. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-140. Fiscal Year 2017 Grant for Community Corrections Program. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-141. This is the 2016 Reduction in Pool Administration, or Admission for the Youth 17 and Under at Recreation and Facilities. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I do have one question, Kristen. When is the pool open?
June 20th. So, next Monday.
Just, just around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-142. Pin County Park Tree Removal Recreation and Facilities. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2016-143. Central Arena Edger Recreation and Facilities. That's a purchase of that. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2016-144. User Fees for the Civic Arena Recreation and Facilities. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-145. Payment for the Repair of Emergency Water Rain Break at the Community Center Buildings and Grounds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-146. Region 7 Area Agency on Aging. This is some carryover funds. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-147. Support for the Golden Horizons. Fiscal Year 2017. Funding from Region 7. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-148. We have a number of payables from the General, Bayonet, and Center Ridge Arms. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-149. We have various budget adjustments. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-150. Contract Addendum for the Verizon Wireless Through Purchasing. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-151. This is Waste and Recycling Contract with Republic Waste Through Purchasing. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-152. Custom Reports Terms of Agreement with Tyler Technologies through IS. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-153. The Reorganization and Consolidation of Responsibility for the Department of Public Defender and Corporation Counsel. And we're setting a public hearing for June 21st, 2016. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Biggick.
Uh, well, but not quite on the topic, but the Supreme Court, I think, came down with some recommendations. I don't know if we could have a little summary of where things are at with-
Sure. Amber, if you'd like to address that?
Yep, the, the Michigan Indigent Defense Council did supply their proposed guidelines to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court did issue an order that gave conditional approval of those guidelines with a caveat, and that was the way the legislature had written the statute, setting up the Michigan, setting up the Indigent Defense Council. They had some concerns that the way the legislature worded it, it was basically usurping some of the authority of the Supreme Court to oversee the different court systems, and also to deal with issues regarding discipline, qualifications, training of attorneys, which is something that is supposed to be the sole province of the Supreme Court. So, the court basically said, you need to go back and rework the language of the statute to make sure that you're not usurping that authority. But as it related to the proposed guidelines that were put forth, for the most part, they did approve those. But it's a conditional approval based on them cleaning up the language of the statute.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Durancheck.
Uh, I'm not going to be supporting this. I, I think we're jumping the gun on, uh, setting up this program. We don't know for sure what's coming down from the state dealing with the MIDC, and uh, only thing I can see it is costing us anywhere from 75,000 to 100,000 dollars more than what we're currently paying. Uh, the judges over there, they, and they, they don't seem to, uh, there's nobody languishing in jails and stuff. Everybody seems to be taken care of all right, from what I understand. So, that's my view, and that's where I'm sticking. Thank you.
Amber?
Okay. I, I just want to clarify what the resolution is before the board today. The issue of taking the public defender's office back in house was already decided on by the board. That is what, that is not what you were voting on today. Um, the issue to bring the two attorneys back in house to provide those services was voted on, I believe, over a month ago. Uh, the issue that is before the board today are for the various budget adjustments regarding reworking of office space, number one, because they do need to build some walls in existing office space to create, uh, different offices. Um, it would also be dealing with providing more support staff to the existing attorneys that are in the office as well. After the probate attorney was moved from part-time to full-time, there was no adjustment in support staff that was made. Um, this also deals with setting a public hearing for your next meeting, which is Personnel and Human Services. You would have a, a special board meeting following that, um, to take the attorneys that we, because we've already interviewed the new attorneys, um, for those new positions. Basically, what we're saying is, right now, for all intents and purposes, we have one public defender office with one department director, and you have five attorneys underneath them. So, if you have a case that comes in that has multiple defendants, the county will assign one of those defendants to our current office, and then they will assign the other defendant to an outside attorney that the county has to pay for, even though we have other attorneys in-house. That's because there's an inherent conflict of interest. You can't have two attorneys from the same office representing two co-defendants who may have interests that are adverse to each other. So, what you're voting on today is to set a public hearing to simply split that one big office back into two offices, the way it historically was originally set up, to save the county money by avoiding those conflicts. I would also like to clarify the fact that this change was not necessarily made in response to the new guidelines that were set forth by the Michigan Indigent Defense Council. There was a concern regarding the control that was had over the attorneys that were representing the current misdemeanor defendants, um, whether or not they were being met with before pre-trial hearings. I understand that the judges have weighed in on this issue. Certainly, they have every right to weigh in on this issue. It's their docket that's going to be affected, but I have sat down with Judge Clyda, indicated to her that there should be no difficulty in coordinating the schedules of two full-time attorneys to accommodate the court's docket, just as easily as two part-time attorneys could coordinate the docket, which is what we've previously had in the past. Um, so, the, the interest at this point in time is just ensuring that those attorneys that are in-house are employees of the county, there's better oversight of those attorneys in the county, they will have more time to dedicate to these defendants. The Michigan Indigent Defense Council guidelines have in fact been conditionally approved by the Supreme Court, so we do know it's coming down the line. Um, but what we're trying to do at this point is simply provide more attorneys and manpower so that when we have to implement these new guidelines, which are going to have to be done within the next six months, we have set offices, set attorneys, everything's in place so that transition will go much, much smoother. If we wait to do it all until the last minute, it's, it's going to be a challenge, and at least this way, if we have the attorneys in-house and working in-house, and we've been able to gauge what their abilities are and, and where they best fit in the office, we'll be much smoother transition to come together, put together the plan that we need to put together for the state, of course, with the court's input, and then submit those written guidelines to the state for approval.
Any other questions? Commissioner Biggick.
The other question is the funding from the state, you know, where, where's that at? You know, the budget's tight, and they're, they're talking about not having the money to, to fund this, so you may end up spending more money.
Sure. The, the actual intent when we first brought this, this before the board, was not necessarily that the state was going to reimburse us for this. There was, it was, it was a positive side effect, hey, and there's a possibility the state may reimburse us, isn't that great? The thought was, independent of the Michigan Indigent Defense Council, that this was the better way to proceed and go back from this pilot project that we did have for a number of years, and go back to the original formulation that we had originally had. Um, the outsourcing of the misdemeanor cases was contracted out, again, as a pilot project. After a review of how that project worked out, it was, a determination was made that they thought it was a better idea to bring it back in.
Commissioner Conan.
Thank you, and I don't think anybody could have said it any better than Amber, just kind of refresh our memory. Uh, we already approved to go back and bring those attorneys in-house, and I think personally we have better control of our own employees and contracting. I've never been a big proponent, contract anything out. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're paying for the cost of assigned counsel for the indigent folks right now, and we will continue to pay it. So, um, I think that what we're going to do is set a public hearing, if anybody wants to have any input on that, and then we, uh, we can't proceed till we have that public hearing.
Right, and, and I just, but I, again, I, I just want to clarify, the issue of bringing the attorneys back in house has already been voted on. The only thing that we are going to be bringing forth at the public hearing next week is whether or not, now that you have this big office, do you want to put in the cost-saving measure of splitting the office in two so we can avoid those conflicts? Otherwise, we're going to be paying more money to outside attorneys that we have to assign the matters out to. And the reason that we need that public hearing is just because under Act 139, whenever you have a reorganization of a department, you have to have a public hearing in order to do that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz.
Well, as a business owner, as I, as I hire subcontractors into my business, if the subcontractors that I hire aren't doing the jobs that I hired them to do, I first have a talk with them and say, hey, this is not what your folks would be doing, you're supposed to be doing this way. And either they toe the line or that subcontractor gets replaced. Uh, not that, you know, that's just the way business is done. So, if we're having a problem with our subcontractor, maybe we need to look for a different one. But with that, we are saving right around, I don't know, 80 to 100,000 dollars a year, uh, with the present system. Now, if we bring things back into house, if, uh, we have a conflict of interest within our newly formed departments, and we have to hire outside counsel, which costs more money, correct?
We're already doing that. We only have two attorneys on staff that do felonies, so anytime there's two defendants, we are automatically referring it out right now.
Right, but that's for that part of it, which we retained anyhow, talking about the other two.
No, if you, not if you split the two departments. That's the point of splitting the departments, is to avoid that, that conflict.
Well, one, one department does felonies, and the other one does misdemeanors, correct?
No.
Right.
Both departments would be doing both felonies and misdemeanors.
And, you know, we got a lot of other additional language within this motion. If we're just trying to set a public hearing at a special meeting, uh, you know, next Tuesday, and why are we kind of limited to setting the public hearing for next Tuesday, and have all this additional language after, in that motion rather than this?
The public hearing, again, is only required by law to determine the reorganization of the office. Even if you don't reorganize the office, the issues that are in front of you today will still need to be decided on. The decision to bring the attorneys back in-house and phase out of the contract has already been voted on. It, it's not an issue that, that's before the board next week. The only issue that's before the board is splitting the two offices. Whether you split the two offices or not, because you're bringing two attorneys back into the courthouse, you're going to need to accommodate them with office furniture and office space, which is what the resolution before the board is today. So, even if you keep them all in the same office and decide never to have a public hearing So even if you keep them all in the same office and decide never to have a public hearing and never to split them in two, these issues that are before the boards today will still need to be acted upon. They were already included in the 2016 budget when the budget was approved last year.
Right.
Okay.
I agree. I ordered for that initially. Had we been waiting for that today, I probably wouldn't have voted for it.
Well, and I do want, I do want to clarify something else that you brought up with the subcontract and that, it's true in many businesses, you can say if you have a problem with the subcontractor, you go and talk to the subcontractor. The difficulty that we have in this particular situation is there is no oversight of the subcontractor because you have indigent criminal defendants who don't know whether or not they're receiving the service that they are supposed to receive or not. I am not disparaging any of the contract attorneys, I think that they're fine attorneys. That's not the issue here. What I am saying is that if you have a separate contract that is not being overseen by anyone other than the attorneys that have the contract, the only way that you know it's not working is if you receive complaints from the indigent defendants who don't know whether they're getting the service that they're supposed to get or not. You have no department director to oversee the employee to know if there is a complaint because, again, it's a contracted service. And the attorneys that we have on staff are supervising felonies and they're dealing with the felonies. They don't deal with the indigent defendants who are being represented on the misdemeanors. I understand that paying more money to defend potential criminal defendants is not a popular position. People want their tax dollars spent in the most, you know, useful way possible. I agree. However, it is a constitutional right of those particular criminal defendants, the county has an obligation to provide the best possible defense for those criminal defendants. And in terms of the service that's being provided now compared to the service that could be provided by bringing in two full-time attorneys in-house that can be supervised by the county and will have ramifications to their employment if, in fact, they're not providing the service that they need to provide, I think will better adequately address that need, it's constitutionally mandated. Especially when you consider the fact that the additional guidelines that are going to come down from the Michigan Indigenous Defense Council are at some point in time in this calendar year going to need to be implemented and it's going to be a lot easier to implement them if we have attorneys in-house as opposed to attorneys on contracts.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, that's all the business from Ways and Means.
But we need a vote.
All in favor?
At this time, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Start with Commissioner Lutz.
No.
Durancheck?
No.
Bigick?
No.
Koonin?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Koonin?
And sir, that's all the business.
Thank you, Commissioner Koonin. We'll move into Personnel, Human Services, and that would be Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I bring the Resolution 2016-154, which is the modification number two to the Michigan Works if there are local agreement. I so move that resolution.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next I bring the Resolution 2016-155, the agreement with Pin County School District from the Health Department. I so move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next I bring Resolution 2016-156, which is the agreement with SBSU for the surface water quality testing and maybe we could get, you know, some dirt testing too. Yeah, some additional testing in the future, so I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Herrick. Joel? Now you can get a question.
Now I get it. Joel, I just kind of wanted, when they do this testing, how quickly the results come back to you? You know, are they on the spot? I mean, you know, how long is it, when they run a sample, it takes?
About eighteen hours.
Okay, and then you're immediately given the results right after that?
Yes, and we're notified immediately by text or by phone if we have to close down a beach. We haven't had to do that so far, so this is a good season so far.
Is it weather-driven or what's, you know, when we see those things, when they come out in the summertime, you know, like sometimes, I always wonder, is it because it's ninety-five degrees out for three days straight, you know?
It can be a variety of things that overload the bacterial balance in surface water, usually weather-related, rain, but it also can be related to wind, the number of people in the beach if they're stirring up sediments on the bottom there. But even with this busy of a beach here, and it's been pretty busy so far, we've had good results so far.
And where would they, where are they taking samples? Do they have certain spots, correct, that they take a sample from?
That's correct. They take three samples from each of the following beaches: Winona Beach, Bay City State Recreation Area, Brissette Beach, South Lynwood Township Beach, Pin County Park Beach, and we're also taking samples from the Kakaulan River and the Saginaw River as well.
That's all I got, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, though. So do we have set days and times where they go out to do the testing?
Usually it's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and I believe that they go out in about, from about nine o'clock to eleven o'clock. They will try to avoid areas if there's a thunderstorm for safety reasons.
Sure.
But it's usually Monday through Wednesday when they're going.
And I, you had mentioned activity. I'm very, very, very happy to report that the activity at Bay City State Recreation Area with young adults has just been awesome so far. Even though Mother Nature hasn't been the best with northeastern winds, the kids seem to like the wave action, so there's certainly a lot of disturbance of soil and it's good to hear that the beach has been in great shape and there hasn't been closures.
Well, I can personally testify for my wife and my kids. They went Friday and they absolutely had a great time.
Oh, wait a minute, I thought you said we didn't have a beach, but we do, right?
What's that?
We have a great beach.
We have an excellent beach. We have an awesome beach.
My other, my other question to you, right now you have five thousand with the possibility of getting an extra fourteen, is that correct?
We will be getting approximately thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Super, so we'll be just, just a little more than eighteen thousand, so there shouldn't be any problems?
There should not be any problems in testing beach water this year.
You guys do good work and Commissioner Lutz has a question.
Thank you.
We test Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yes.
Then we get our results and on Tuesday, Wednesday.
Day and Thursday, yes. And if necessary, if a beach is closed, we'll go back out on Thursday or Friday if we have to.
Okay.
So we reopen it. We don't want a beach closed for a week.
No, but I was just wondering, if the weekend, if the weekend, so it doesn't matter or we're checking how the weekend people are using the water or if it's affected or whatever.
Well, the reason, we're both public agencies, the Health Department and Saginaw Valley State University, and we're Monday through Friday. But like I said, if we have to go out on a weekend, we will go out on a weekend to test the beach. But generally, what we've seen so far is that there are crowds just about every day there, so that's a good thing.
Yep. Very good.
Do you want to?
Sure, Commissioner Lutz.
So is it a dollar, are you going to do additional testing or is it just maintaining existing testing?
Well, typically in the past, we would go out one day per week. This allows us to go out three days per week at three of those five beaches, plus the two river sites.
So we're anything, we're circling or?
That's correct.
Mr. Strauss, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no other questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2016-157, vacancies and new positions, Division on Aging, Environmental Affairs, and Community Development, and Peter control, I move that resolution.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2016-158, with the satellite dish and installation policy at the Center of Ridge, I move that resolution.
Discussion? I do have a question, but I'm not sure who I have that, well, there you are. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So in reading all the information on kind of the dos and don'ts and the procedures, if they have a dish, is it inside their house near the window in their apartment?
No, it's out on their balcony. It just can't be attached to the balcony railing or the building.
And so, in order for them to have it out there, to get the wire to come in, according to the rules and regulations, you can't drill any holes.
We have.
So how did they get the wire past the window?
We have split-unit air conditioners, so one of the ways is they can use the conduit through the air conditioners to bring the wire into their apartment.
Very good. See, I didn't see that anywhere in identifying how they're going to do this.
It doesn't identify it in the policy.
Okay.
That's just one way that an installer could do it.
So those that can't afford cable have the option to be able to put an antenna on finally?
Correct.
Good. Hopefully they live on the right side of the building.
Yeah, we hope so.
All right. Any other questions? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have on Personnel and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. We'll go to Board of Commissioners and Commissioner Tilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2016-159, reports to the county executive. I so move this resolution.
Order. Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-160, phone system consultative agreement with the ISD. I so move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2016-161, support for Senate, I think that's Senate Bill.
Yes.
Thirty-nine of 2015 for Environmental Affairs. I so move this resolution.
Order.
Discussion? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes business of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tilly. Reports of the county officials and departments under County Exec. Mr. Hickner, would you like to read that or would you like?
You can.
Very good. Recommendation for appointments to the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works Workforce Development Board of Directors for Prosperity Region Set Five, Jeff Amando, I believe is what it is, and Chris Taylor. Resolution 2016-162, what is your pleasure?
Support.
Any discussions? With none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. County Exec. Let's move into unfinished business. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed that's on somebody's mind? If not, how about new business? Miscellaneous. Commissioner Koonin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is it today, the six, fourteen?
Fourteen.
Eleven days from today, a week from Saturday, Dent annual beach wellness. Coming very good. We've had a meeting with Ann Gaska, Bob, and Ernie, and myself, and as everybody has said, the beach is phenomenal. I think Mother Nature helped us out, but the last fourteen years of a lot of hard work has enhanced that as well. And one thing, and Ernie, you're going to be groomed in that, and every year that beach looks great, fabulous, and the water quality is so much nicer, but I forgot to mention Ron Graham, who's been out there with us for fourteen years, setting up the volleyball courts, and he's a guy, he's a tireless worker, he's just a good guy who comes out and he's helped us for years and years. And I just want to let the public know all the good things that this gentleman does.
Yeah, let me just add to that. The name Ron Graham should be a little bit familiar to residents of Bay County, and if you don't know who he is, he's a gentleman that donates most of his time through the week over at the Soldier Cemetery, doing everything from writing up stones to checking out the trash, making sure that that cemetery is something people of Bay County could be proud for. Not only does he donate his time, but up until lately, when he finally got some donations, his own equipment and gas came out of his own pocket, so he's truly an asset to Bay County, and I'm glad that you brought his name up because he does a lot of stuff behind the scenes and it's time for us to toot his horn a little bit.
And that's Pine Ridge, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Newly known as the Soldier Cemetery.
Oh, is it?
Okay. Very good. Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Durancheck?
Tuesdays in the park, at Pin County City Park, every Tuesday night, seven o'clock, different musical things at our new band shell there. So if anybody wants different types of music every week. Pin County Cheese Festival is this weekend, so parades on Saturday, eleven o'clock, and fireworks in the evening, about ten o'clock.
Very good. Anyone else? Commissioner Herrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to let all the folks out there know that at Discovery Preserve on Newco Avenue by, next to Division A.J., they just added a new playground and it's all, it's no metal, you know, it's like logs and stuff like that, the way it should be, and they will be opening that to the public on the seventeenth, which is Friday. It's all brand-new, they just, something they put in there, those guys have worked really hard the last month getting this thing ready, you know, but there's been a lot of planning, cleaning up, and it's a great place for young kids, for grandparents to take their grandkids to, which I do, and the kids love it out there, you see a lot of birds, all kinds of wildlife out there. Every once in a while, you see a deer run through there too, on the old golf course. And one other thing, the Bay Community Foundation, you know, they still meet and I, there's a committee that meets, a steering committee that meets, I, myself, and Laura Ogar and the county executive, Mr. Hickner, is on, and, you know, we're really, people think that, you know, that they just let things happen, and they don't. They don't happen without involvement, and there's a lot of people, a lot of community members and businessmen that are involved in the steering committee and they're really working hard to make, you know, Bay County a place to go, much like you guys do on the beach, you know, I mean, that's a bit, we know the water's our biggest, our biggest resource and it's bringing people back, you know, it's, people are going to discover it, they're going to be out there, they're going to be camping, and they, all I always wanted was a beach. Just get the beach ready and people will come, you know, and those people on the foundation steering committee are working very hard to make all the other aspects of the county, you know, worthy of people coming in and hopefully living here and spending money. Two things.
So I have a question for you, Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
For those that are out there that says, there's nothing to do in Bay County, what would you say to them? No place to go?
There is something to do every day in the summertime. If you want something to do, there's something going on every day in Bay County, and it's everywhere. I mean, it's a great place, you know, you can start at seven in the morning and go all the way till night, you can always find someplace to go, someplace different to see, you know, it's, you know, I've been here my whole life, as many of you have, and it's, I love it here, you know, it's just, it's home, and it's, I'm sure it's always going to be home. It's where my friends are, my family is. I'm going to be here, they'll probably plant me here someday too, so just the way it is.
Very good. All right, any other announcements? That being said, we have a couple appointments coming up in October, Land Bank Authority, one local unit of government representative, it's a three-year term, currently Richard Byrne, Dick Byrne is on there. Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, a one-three-year term, Thomas Starkweather is serving that position. And then in December, Division on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms in Districts Two, Four, Six, and One at Large. Ms. Amber, is there need for a closed session?
There is, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to refer that request to the Personnel Director.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do need a closed session pursuant to MCLA fifteen dot two-six-eight section HC, for strategic negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a department agreement.
Very good. So move. Order. Any discussion? With none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Durancheck?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Koonin?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Very good. Mr. Sergeant Lawrence.
Yes, Mr. Durancheck.
If you lock them down.
Did I miss something?
No, you don't need a person to make the motion, go back.
Oh, motion back in the regular, in the regular order. Sorry.
Any discussion on it? With no discussion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
No, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Could I make a motion that the board would vote to follow the recommendation of Mr. Quinn as made during closed session?
So, no, we'll hold it.
We want to get to comparisons first.
Requesting a motion.
Correct. So before we vote on it, we need, Mr. Redmond would like to give a little bit more information.
He said he's ready, he's got enough information. Would you jump to that? Yeah, come back next week.
So, okay, a motion requesting that the board reconvene next week in closed session to consider additional information provided by?
Just that, no, it's that you're, what we agreed upon in closed session is contingent upon acquiring the information that was requested.
That sounds better.
That covers your whole.
Great.
Support.
Now, if there's any other questions, which I don't believe there is.
We'll take a vote on it.
Yes. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn is always in order, Mr. Ford.
Discussion? With none. We're adjourned. Thank you.